Good morning and welcome to the second monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to this regular meeting of the Board. We are holding this meeting today in the Cone Room as the Town Hall Meeting Room is preparing for the municipal elections that will be taking place in another 12 days. It is a regular meeting of the Board. It is a public meeting, not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee to make a comment or pose a question on any item that is on the agenda today. There are copies of our meeting agenda on the table as you come in. Item number two is approval of minutes from the first meeting in the month of October, which was held on the 12th. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes as they are presented?
So.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, First Selectmen Updates. Try to make this short today. There has been quite a bit of activity taking place in and around town government. Week began with a double header. It was the BET, Regular Monthly Meeting, and of course, the RTM Monday night. The BET, the most salient results of that was the adoption of budget guidelines for the fiscal year 2018-19. Those guidelines are in keeping with the practice that the Board has had for many years to give direction and guidance to the town administration and the schools. We are prepared to review and act upon those. Great deal of work does take place in this building with the Finance Department and with the Town Administrator in looking at budgets throughout the year, looking at process improvements within departments, and adhering to the parameters that are established. And I would forecast that 2018 will be a good year for us in terms of meeting those targets, but 19, 20, and beyond may pose some challenges as we look at what's happening with the state. So, that was the BET. The RTM had quite a lengthy meeting, three topics of substance that were debated. One was the sense of the meeting resolution for the New Lebanon Elementary School and moving forward with the BET releasing the condition on appropriating the balance of the funds irrespective of action by the state. The state is committed to reimburse us upwards to 80 percent for the cost of construction, but it has become hostage to the state budget crisis and the governor's unwillingness to fulfill his commitment. That item was postponed to a special meeting. The next item they took up, which passed resoundingly, was the Harbor Management Plan. I am very thankful to all of the volunteers who have served on the various committees, the most recent Harbor Management Commission, who brought forth to the town through innumerable amount of meetings, plan to govern the future direction of our beautiful coastal shoreline. It was passed resoundingly. I want to thank Bruce Angiello, particularly Lyle Gibbons, who spearheaded the process, and all the members of that particular relatively new agency, because this is the first time in the history of the town that we have a Harbor Management Plan. And it's been a long sought objective of mine, and I'm very pleased with that. I'd like to thank Mr. Toner, Selectman Toner, for being our ex officio member of that. He's been attending those meetings, and thank you very much, sir, for your work on that. And third and final was an amendment for the Bruce Museum to forge ahead with construction of an addition to their campus. The last one, I believe, took place in 1992. There was concerns expressed on members of the RTM that the agreement did not contain enough language that would protect the town, insulate the town from any exposure or liability should the Bruce not raise the funds, should they entertain construction and begin construction, and then fall short, should they encounter any environmental liability. Working with our Law Department, with the members of the BET Law Committee, we tightened the language, and we believe that the project should move forward, that the Bruce has given the town no reason to question their track record of success in raising the funds and providing the support for the museum. So that was passed fairly overwhelmingly, and that project, of course, moves forward. So that was this week with substantive meetings. On a couple of other notes, I just want to highlight two letters that I received from constituents that acknowledges the good work of our town departments. One of them specific is to the Tree Department, and it comes from a couple on Ernell Drive, and it reads as follows. "We take this opportunity to inform you of the outstanding tree work that was performed at the beginning of October on Raphael Place Riverside by Foreman Jeff Scheck and his crew, Joe, Chris, Tom, and Kevin. Under the leadership of Mr. Scheck, the crew was very competent and knowledgeable in their field. It was a pleasure to see such precise workmanship. We also compliment Margaret Cossey, who is our first contact in dealing in this matter. Margaret Cossey is a very efficient and patient employee who represents the town of Greenwich with complete diplomacy. I know you must be proud to have such outstanding employees representing the town of Greenwich. Sincerely, Mr. and Mrs. Richard Green." I share that because it's not often we get acknowledgements, or we don't get them enough for the good work our people do, and we're going to share this with the departmental management, but publicly to say thank you to Jeff and Margaret and that team. The other is from a gentleman who had the opportunity to utilize the services of the Nathaniel Witherell Skilled Nursing Facility, and he writes, "This serves to commend the high standard of rehabilitative care that I received while a short term inpatient at Nathaniel Witherell recently," which I thank everyone for. Above, excellent health care by RN William, RN Evette, RN Fushba, APRN Shannon, RN Tanai, Aid Monica, physical therapist Lerta, and physical therapist Lorenzo, who were demonstrated on a consistent basis with care and compassion. Administrator Mary Bruce's friendly demeanor and above and beyond attitude to make me comfortable was infectious. My interactions with Ann and admission were superb. The respect, compassion, and consideration that I received by all is exceptional regardless of their involvement in my case. In other words, the entire staff at Nathaniel Witherell has a pleasant disposition at all times, which should not go unnoticed. Accordingly, Nathaniel Witherell provided me a level of health care that exceeded my expectations, which I will share with my friends and family in the Greenwich community and beyond. With tremendous gratitude, Jim Severine." So, we know how good the Witherells, but nothing like having the person who go and utilize the service. Finally, there was a story that appeared in the newspaper over the weekend by local opinion columnist, Robert Horton, concerning the Binny Park Pond. As we all know, this has been a longstanding initiative to undertake dredging and restoration of that very pristine park. There were some claims made that there were omissions in the development of the project. Commissioner Seabird, at my request, responded most appropriately and expeditiously with the following. "The Department of Public Works would like to provide some information about the Binny Park project to help correct some misinformation shared in the press. DPW, with its consultant and through discussions with regulators and the town's park staff, developed the design for the project that has been underway this summer. An assertion was made that the design left out sediment forbays. That's not correct. In the following, we give some information on this project's design, and more importantly, we talk a little about what you can do to help. Let's talk about the area in question. We're talking about Binny Park in Cider Mill Brook. This is a living system, a water course that supports a variety of wildlife, including mammals, turtles, fish, birds, and other life forms. Today, you don't line these with concrete or some other impervious surface that eliminates part of the natural ecosystem. Such surface would not readily allow plant life or other life to find a home at the bottom of the channel. Let's also think about the permitting for these systems. The project was reviewed by the United States Army Corps of Engineers, the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and the Town's Inland, Wetlands, and Water Courses Agency. These entities were to see us protect the environment. We, as engineers and scientists, also want to protect the environment. Today's design goals are to return rivers and streams to as natural estate as possible while meeting desired maintenance goals. We obtained the approval of all these agencies for this project. That's three permits. Let's review the project. Sediment accumulated over many years has been removed from the ponds in the park. The sediment forbays were constructed, stream banks restored, and stone weirers restored, constructed among other tasks. Landscaping will occur in the spring. The design will allow us to lower water in the pond, isolate the forbey areas, and remove sediment every year or two. Maintenance frequency will be dependent upon Mother Nature and operating experience. Our design allows the turtles, the fish, and all the other creatures to continue to thrive in the entire area as they have been doing for decades. Let's talk about what residents can do to help Binny Park now and in the future. If you live in the Cider Mill Brook watershed, and particularly along the banks of the brooks, any and all efforts to control sediment and erosion on your property is appreciated. While we know erosion is a natural process and sediment will move through the brook down to the park, each and every one of us should do what we can to minimize this on our properties. Many resources are available that talk about proper stream bank plannings, as well as other stormwater handling processes that address erosion. And implementing good stormwater practices on our properties can also help water quality issues. We appreciate everyone's help in efforts to keep Greenwich green and to keep Binny Park the beautiful place that it is. If you have some good ideas about how to reach out to people about stormwater and other environmental matters, we're happy to hear them. We recently had a neighborhood association reach out to us about that chronic problem, people throwing their dog waste in the storm drain system. Now, I'd like to think that something we can all agree is poor practice, and that we could strive to educate folks to stop doing. So, thank you to DPW Commissioner Amy Seabird for taking the time to respond to, again, a distortion of the facts and a distortion of the truth, which unfortunately is all too common today with this particular writer. But perhaps it sells newspapers, but it certainly doesn't serve the public interest. That concludes my updates today. Moving on to old business, there's no old business under new business. If we can amend the agenda by moving to take up Item B, which we're very pleased to be able to do today, which is a proposal to name the atrium of the Greenwich Public Safety Complex in honor of former First Selectman John B. Marganat Jr. Mr. Marganat is a legend in the Greenwich community. He was born and raised here. His family's run a business here. He's raised his five children here. He has served this community for many decades, I believe approaching half a century of service and beyond. He began, as a young child, actually supporting the efforts of the United States Government in being a spotter for warplanes at what is presently the Greenwich Senior Center, the Old Town Hall. And that was his earliest contributions to the town and to our country. He served in the uniform in the United States Military, and then went on to became a civil engineer through education at Rensselaer Polytech Institute. He came back to Greenwich, began working in the family business after doing some work for other engineering firms in the region. He married his beautiful wife Dolores Delea, affectionately known as Dolly, and again, had five children. He became involved in the community through the representative town meeting, and like many who come to the role of the RTM, he did so out of a concern for the safety of his children and others in looking to see a sidewalk installed, I believe, up on Valley Road. He served 10 years on the RTM. After a brief hiatus, was recruited to serve on the Board of Estimant and Taxation, for which he did for a term before being recruited to serve as a selectman for the town from 1981 to 1985. After that, he was elected First Selectman and reelected four times thereafter. His tenure is most marked by contributions to improvement to our most important asset, and people do not think about this, but our wastewater treatment facility at Grass Island is a critical part of not only maintaining the public health of the community, but it also is a critical part of maintaining the ecological and environmental aspects. We just talked about the Harbor Management Plan. Well, without that decision, some, what, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, we would not be able to enjoy the bucolic Long Island sound with the clean water that it has today. And so that decision and one of the major investments during Mr. Marganat's tenure has been a lasting legacy. In addition, having had the opportunity to read Mr. Marganat's oral history with the Greenwich Library, and having had the pleasure of being, having him as a mentor and watching him evolve, or I evolved and learned from him, his temperament and style was one that people responded to. Mr. Marganat was a listener, a collaborator, and a consensus builder, and in many ways, those attributes are ones that I seek to emulate and ones that I think are perhaps lacking in leadership positions throughout the country today. So, I think it's appropriate and fitting that Mr. Marganat's service, his contributions, his legacy be recognized by our community. He is a son of Greenwich, and I'm pleased today to present the proposal to name the atrium at the Public Safety Complex in his honor for the recognition of his service to the town of Greenwich. Again, a kind man, a gentle man, and one that, again, exhibits the attributes that we wish were more in abundance today in our civil and political life.
Yes. Just, John Marganat and his family represent what is good about Greenwich. John, and my family actually, has known the Marganats for decades. He is a passionate supporter in many, many ways of public safety, so it's fitting that this honor be bestowed on this fine man. And Peter was mentioning the sewage plant. I vote for this, opposed to putting up a sewer. I think we made the right choice here in terms of that, but this is, I, without hesitation, support such and look forward to this honor and to celebrate someone's true, good legacy.
Great, thank you.
I haven't known John all my life, but I have known him for a significant portion of my life, and he is a good role model. He has not given up serving the town of Greenwich. I tried to recruit him for the Call-A-Ride of Greenwich to be a driver, but he sent John Delea instead. And so that was good, because we needed drivers. But John volunteers in Greenwich Hospital. He's a fixture there, and like I said, he continues to serve Greenwich, and thank you, John.
Thank you. And John is presently serving as one of five members of the Town Board of Ethics, and has, I believe, in his second or third term in that capacity. So, he continues his legacy of service to Greenwich. Rick, if you'd like to, please.
Can I say something?
Keep it short. Keep it short. Is the mic on? Mic on, Rick? Flip the switch on the top there, if you push that up. Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Great dad. What a great dad. Love you very much, Dad. Watched you through all those years as First Selectman from 1985 to 1995 and before then, when you were on the RTM, and then before that, going to all those PTA meetings. True son of town, true son of Greenwich. I remember driving around with him in his, I think at that time you may have had a Cadillac, and he had the gold badge, the gold police badge with the scanner. And we would go, we would go to calls, and I remember one tragic call, and that was the night the bridge fell down. And he called me up at 11:30 and said, "We've got to go see this." And we went, and we checked it out, and it was quite tragic. But he was always very involved, and was very proud to be associated with the Police Department, and I think it's quite fitting that we'll see his name up there on a plaque. And when we go to meetings there, and when I go there sometimes in my business to see people, I'll be able to look up there with confidence, you know, because sometimes I have occasion to go there for some of my clients, being a lawyer here for many years. But Ladens Rock, Ladens Rock, you were in on Ladens Rock. That would have changed old Greenwich if they subdivided Ladens Rock. Would have had 20 houses in there. The intersection down by Arch Street, what a mess that was. Your engineering experience was very important there. Many projects, many projects. And he had a good legal mind as well, always wanted to go to law school, but I don't think he really needed to go there. Smarter than a lot of lawyers. And we can assure the Chief that although he still has the gold badge, he will not be using it to assert people and parking spaces on Greenwich Avenue and risking impersonating an officer.
He'll come to the space.
What about the parking pass? Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's important to note that Attorney Richard Marganat is continuing the legacy of service as a member of the RTM from District 8 and in other initiatives in town. So, Rick, that's wonderful that you're keeping up the wonderful Marganat service legacy. I do want to acknowledge several people in attendance today. Our Town Clerk Carmella Budkins, who has worked closely with Mr. Marganat through the years, and our Police Chief, who perhaps would like to make a brief comment. I understand that Mr. Marganat was Commissioner when you were administered the oath.
You may have given me my last promotion, but he hired me. But again, I really appreciate that. I didn't mean to. But I just want to, like I said, acknowledge that there are, you know, an important part of the police organization is Commissioner, who is a civilian who we were accountable to. And when this proposal was made, I had a couple retired officers who were very excited to hear that one of their commissioners was going to be recognized. We long think that it's due, and we'll be excited to have some type of good ceremony at the police station. We're ready to put the flags. Congratulations. Remember, it's not for what you've done, it's for what you continue to do, so I'm sure they're going to keep your work in business. But again, congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, and welcome, Hillary. You and I have been conversing quite a bit over the last. Do you want to come to the, that way it'll get picked up.
It's not necessary, no, thank you. I just want to say that, as a family, we're thrilled that the town is going ahead and recognizing our father for his decade of service. They really do span a lifetime from standing at the top of the Town Hall looking for those enemy planes to now walking the halls of the hospital helping people out. So, we're just, we're very glad that his recognition has been bestowed on him and beyond a plaque. I hope to see some very large letters that say that Marganat Atrium hanging, and I hope to, I envision a very big celebration, you know, kicking this off, so that people will know to all that building, that area. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Hillary. And it is fitting, it brings, when you think about the space, it brings the police and fire together as one, and it's in the heart of the downtown, at the very location that you began your spotting for enemy warplanes. So, it's exciting for us, and again, thank you, Chief, for being here. And we have with us Mr. Krisky, who served with Mr. Marganat. He was Chairman of the BET and served alongside of him. Mr. Tellerico, who also served in the community and has been a lifetime friend of John. So, thank you all for coming today. And perhaps Director Azrelian in parking can recruit Mr. Marganat. He might want to be one of our parking appeals officers. I mean, he's got a little time left. Before he leaves, let's see if we can recruit him.
Too nice.
He's got diplomacy, mediation experience. Let's not lose sight of the fact that he's been serving the state of Connecticut on mediation panels since the 90s. So, I would encourage folks to also take the opportunity to read the oral history interview that was done on April 2nd, 2001, which highlights Mr. Marganat's lifetime of service in town government and community. It was quite exciting to read and is a true testament to everything we're recognizing today. So, without further ado, I'd like to formalize the motion to name the atrium of the Public Safety Complex in honor of former First Selectman John B. Marganat, and that it be recognized as the Marganat Atrium at the Greenwich, at the Public Safety Complex.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is just a mock-up. It's got to be finessed, but we wanted to have something for visual purposes, and we'll look forward to, again, working with our DPW Building Construction and Maintenance, the Marganat family, and with the police on fire to effectuate the honor in the very near future. So, again, thank you. And I do want to acknowledge Mrs. Marganat, because I've known Mrs. Marganat my entire life of service, and if there is any example of a supportive spouse, devoted spouse, it's Dolly Marganat, and one of the sweetest ladies in this town. Everybody loves you, Dolly. We could run you, and I'm sure we'd win by acclamation, because you have just the biggest heart and nicest smile. We love you. We love you.
You're a very proud woman. And I tell Peter every year.
So, God bless you both. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next item before us, one of the roles of the Board of Selectmen is to serve as the Parking and Traffic Authority, and we have been responsive to a number of issues that are taking place around town. One of them happens to relate to the Byram Business District. There has been a couple meetings held with my office and the officials of the Town Parking Services to see how we could best accommodate those business owners, their patrons. And one of the requests that they made to us is that several years ago, there was establishment of an annual permit for the business owners, so that they could be assured of a parking space when they arrive to open up their establishments. At the time, the period in which there were restrictions to effectuate them, having that window of opportunity was 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. So, essentially, no one except those holding the permits could park there. In our meetings and looking at several prospective solutions, one of the requests was made to expand that, 8 to 9, to 8 to 10, 8 to 11, which would provide those arriving later than 9, some assurance that they'll have space. So, in talking with our Director, she's going to present it, it seemed like an initial reasonable first step in addressing some of the issues that are taking place. I do want to also thank DPW, because they did install a crosswalk sign on Mill Street, which ideally is intended to help get people to slow down, but you know, what we're really trying to do is modify people's behavior. Not an easy thing to do, but we do our best. So, thank you, Director Azrelian.
Thank you, First Selectman. Does everybody have a copy of the proposal? So, as the First Selectman Tessie said, we did go down to Byram. We had this very large meeting, and a lot of parties were involved. And the one thing about Byram is that, you know, the one thing I quoted, it's a mix of old and new development, and it's constantly changing. And you know, how do we keep in line with the character of the neighborhood and understand the changes that are going on? It's been a long time since there's been any changes to the parking proposed, and this is the first step to modifying and hopefully controlling the parking, given its proximity to New York, given the fact that you have a lot of businesses going in now, and there is a parking issue. So, one of the first things that the merchants requested is that we look at increasing the time for the permit holders, for increasing it to three hours as opposed to one hour where it is right now. And we evaluated that and felt that that was reasonable, and the extra time would allow the merchants more time to access the parking area and utilize the parking spaces, because after the restrictions expire, it becomes open to the parking. to the public. And the merchants were not getting there in a sufficient amount of time to utilize the spaces. So essentially, they were very underutilized within that time period of the restriction. So the proposal today is to extend the restriction from eight to nine to eight to eleven to give the merchants ample time to utilize the spaces for the purpose of, you know, parking in there. Because by the time they open up their businesses, by the time they get a chance to go into the downtown area, it's already past that nine o'clock timeframe, and those spaces are completely utilized by people that may or may not live or do business within the Byram Business District.
Thank you. As you noted too, in the memo dated October 24th, taken from the Byram neighborhood or comprehensive plan, it said, "The Byram neighborhood is a mix of old and new development that is regentrifying while keeping its historic character." And part of that is, the feedback is that people do not want meters, despite meters being a tool which can best regulate the resource, the spaces. So I think in my interactions with them, this is one of a couple steps we're going to do. Also, I think it's important to share with folks that you just recently hired, and I administered the oath to a part-time parking enforcement officer who's a retired.
Darian police officer.
Darian police officer, whose wife works for the town.
Yes, for the school.
And school, so they're familiar with, with Greenwich, and he's going to be assigned by you to step up enforcement there, which is one of the requests that was made by the business owners. So it's a, it's a gradual process. There's no silver bullet, there's no magic wand, but we're going to look at implementing this change, increase enforcement, and over time, consider additional measures that could help keep the spaces available for the merchants.
Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate and really kind of explain, I know this has been a, a topic that has come from other neighborhood associations or business districts, is that, you know, the, the funding of the officers and how the tickets are being given. So parking ticket revenue, revenue from tickets being issued goes straight to the general fund. I just want to make that clear. So the Parking Department keeps no, nothing from that. So people have this misconception that if you issue tickets, that that should be sufficient in supporting a personnel, but it doesn't. The revenue from the coins goes into the parking fund, and that really supports our operations and whatnot. So when you have this debate between meters and non-meters, you know, a lot of the merchants like to say, "Well, you know, if you issue enough tickets, that should be enough to support personnel," but it doesn't. It's, it's separate funds. So I just want to make that clear. And, you know, we're dedicated to supporting the parking. We're dedicated to all of the neighborhood associations, all of the businesses, and we want to improve the parking. But that is something that tends to get thrown around as misconception, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Great. Are there any questions, any comments?
I have one question. Rita, do you control the parking around the library down in Byram?
No.
No.
That is, it's public parking. It's something that if it does get abused, the library would have to bring our attention to it, we'd have to look at the ordinances. But it is a, a public area, and it's encouraged. So we don't regulate it, we don't enforce it. But that doesn't mean that we can't, you know, we just haven't brought awareness to that situation if there's a parking issue, so.
Well, I kind of feel as though there's going to be a parking issue when they start construction of the new school, because it's going to displace some of the teachers. And very selfishly, I'd like to get a parking space there, because I go to the library there all the time. So maybe you'll be looking into that at some point.
There is a, a way to kind of ensure that people who are going to library are given ample parking, as opposed to people who just go in there to utilize the parking facility. So I think we just need to pay more attention as to what's going on, and we'll work with the library on figuring out a parking plan.
Okay. Because I know some of the, the workers down on, in the center of Byram use that lot.
Any other comments, questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the request to amend the parking restrictions for twenty-four spaces in the Williams Street lot from eight AM, nine AM to eight AM to eleven AM?
So moved.
Without objection.
Thank you. And we've ordered new signs to be placed in the Byram area. I know that's one of the other issues that has been raised by the merchants, is that the signage is poor, we need to update the signs. So brand-new, big signs, very clear, and hopefully that'll be up as soon as this is on the place.
Great. And also, you'll communicate, so there's a couple of merchants that have sort of assumed responsibility for the broader group. Ms. Barbie Finn is one. And if you and I can speak, but if you could communicate her that this was passed today, they were looking forward to it. They were, you know, invited to come, but they said there was no need. They appreciated the action on it. Okay, that, that concludes new business. The next item is number six, appointments and nominations. Mr. Tonner?
There are two members of the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee, whose term ends in June of eighteen. They've indicated that they want to continue for a further term beyond that. So I would like to propose that Audrey McNiff and Cynthia Anderson both be, have their, their terms extended to June of two thousand, June of 2021.
Is there a second?
There is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I will report. You've always asked, you've asked me on conservation. We could finally report that the alternate position for conservation was filled by Laura DiBunaventura.
DiBunaventura.
Yeah, DiBunaventura. And she is the director of, and I have her card on my desk downstairs, Environmental Sustainability at the Greenwich Country Day School, very deeply involved in environmental and conservation issues, air quality issues throughout the state, and brings a lot of expertise to the objectives that the commission's looking to fulfill.
Very good. A member of the Greenwich Commission on Aging, James B. Dougherty, his term expires in March of eighteen. He has indicated that he wants to continue on the Commission on Aging. So I'd like to propose that his term be extended for another three years to March 2021.
Okay. I'll second that. I know Mr. Dougherty is very dedicated to the community, and his expertise as an attorney on that commission has been helpful with some of the changes they've made in getting a 501(c)(3) established, the friends of the Greenwich Senior Center. So I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just a question for you. Now that the RTM adopted the new terms, will the months, I don't have it in front of me, but the months change, so.
That's something I haven't looked at.
So, I mean, I think, happy to move them forward, we voted to move them forward, but just the date may not necessarily be March. It might be June, it might be, I didn't carry that forward, but.
That's it.
Okay, that, that includes appointments and nominations. We do have several matters in executive session we will take up that relate to property tax appeals settlements and a discussion on some pending litigation. Perhaps we take a brief recess before we move to go into executive session to discuss this. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
One thirty-three. In the executive session, we heard from Assistant Town Attorney Gene McLaughlin on several property tax appeals. There were three particular cases, two involving two properties owned by the same entity. For purposes of resolution, we call upon Ms. Hines.
Okay, on the case of docket number HHB CV sixteen dash six zero three four five nine eight S, parcel number zero one dash two one two four S. There's a recommendation to settle this for a tax credit of approximately thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirteen.
Talk closer to it.
There will be a tax credit of approximately thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars against future tax payments. If the plaintiff had prevailed at trial based on the sale on the asset's value, it would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately one hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred dollars plus interest and costs.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Give me a second.
Without objection.
The next case involves two properties. The two docket numbers are docket number FST CV sixteen dash six zero two nine zero two one S. It is parcel number ten dash nineteen thirty-nine. The next is docket number FST CV sixteen dash six zero two nine zero two zero S. It is parcel number ten dash seventeen forty-two. The proposed settlement is for a credit of approximately forty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty dollars against future tax payments. And this is in lieu of, if the plaintiffs, plaintiffs had prevailed at trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately seventy-three thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars plus interests and cost.
Right, and it's important to note that that was zero dollars for four twenty-nine Roundhill LLC.
Correct.
It was all allocated to four thirty-five. Is there a motion?
Give me a second.
Without objection.
The third case is also two properties, involving two properties, two cases. First one is HHB CV sixteen dash six zero three four five nine five S. The parcel number is zero one dash three one nine five S. The second docket number is HHB CV sixteen dash six zero three four five nine S, four five nine six S. Parcel number zero one one seven six three S. There will be a reduction of taxes for a credit of approximately ten thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-two cents, I'm sorry, ten thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars against future tax payments for parcel number zero one three one nine five S, and a credit of ten thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars for parcel number zero one dash one seven six three S.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Give me a second.
Without objection. That concludes the property tax appeal settlements today. There was an item presented by Attorney Ahmad in the matter of Albert Zornitsky versus Daniel Martin. It involved a automobile accident that occurred in June of 2015, and there is a proposed offer of compromise presented. Based upon the memorandum that was provided to the board today, the town council, working with our inner risk management association on portions of the claim, has proposed a settlement of forty-two thousand dollars. This was what was approved, I believe, by the BET Law Committee on the claims. For those who are unaware, legal matters that come before the town are required to go before not only the Board of Selectmen, but the twelve-person BET and the ten-person RTM Claims Committee. So there's a total of twenty-five people who have to settle on all matters of litigation, and this is an example of one of those. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That concludes the business before the board today. The next meeting, Barbara, is November.
Is that for the twelfth?
Twelfth. Next meeting is November twelfth. All I will say is good luck, gentlemen, on November seventh. Thank you.